Windsor Heights City Council comes to order. Roll call.
Searies.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Here.
Ken Harms.
Roll call. Motion to approve the agenda?
So good.
Second. And roll call.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Searies?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael LaFredo?
Yes.
And Searies? Yes.
Public have any comments on this? None being heard. Motion to close the public hearing?
Dave, I would just say as a matter of after seeing here on page five, this is February 3rd with the council meeting, and obviously today's the 4th.
Oh, that was on the chief's action form?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Page five.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Searies? Yes.
Consideration of first reading of said ordinance twenty dash zero one, amending the code of ordinances, City of Windsor Heights, to amend chapter one twenty-one oh seven relating to the sale, giving, or otherwise supplying tobacco products to persons under twenty-one years of age.
Move.
Second. Discussion?
Dave, I would just say as a matter of after seeing here on page five, this is February 3rd with the council meeting, and obviously today's the 4th. Oh, that was on the chief's action form?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Page five.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Searies? Yes.
Consideration of first reading of said ordinance twenty dash zero one. Motion to approve the first reading ordinance number twenty dash zero one. Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Searies? Yes.
Consideration of first reading of said ordinance twenty dash zero one. Motion? Someone?
Second.
Discussion?
I just pointed out on page twelve, perhaps I shouldn't have called it properly, but item E says motion to approve doesn't have a council person's name.
We're on the first reading of the ordinance.
Yeah, we're not going yet.
Okay, we're at three B.
Any discussion with the council? We're on six B trees. Three B. Our three B's.
Just the tree, no, we have a motion by Mike Jones, second by Joseph Jones to approve the first reading ordinance number twenty dash zero one.
Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Searies?
Yes.
Next item is public forum, item set aside for comments from the public on city business other than what's listed on the agenda. No action will be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for record. Keep your comments, no more than five minutes, please.
Hey, everyone. Lauren Campbell, 1004 63rd Street with an update from your Chamber of Commerce. February 26th is our next Chamber breakfast at Gilroy's from seven forty-five to nine fifteen. As you recall, when we rolled out, as you hopefully recall, when we rolled out our event calendar, we wanted to schedule some Chamber breakfast with council to have one council representative join representing the rest of the council to be able to talk to our members, primarily we have business owners, of course, but we also have some residents. So to be able to ask questions or maybe to share resources like, for example, I know that there's some funding stuff that is rarely used for like home improvements that we have low utilization. So that could be an opportunity to share similar to when Mayor Dave did the lunch over at the Puerto Rican restaurant. So consider this my ask for volunteer before the end of the meeting to know that one of you could join us on February 26th. Again, that's seven forty-five to nine fifteen at Gilroy's. We've got three new members that I want to make sure that I point out and share these will also be listed in our article this month in the Windsor Heights Living Magazine. But the Black Phoenix Group, you might have heard of that from owner Zachales Henry, you might know. And then Barry Hesse, broker at Remax Concepts, also joining the chamber. And then Hope Wood is our new attorney for the chamber as our previous attorney has retired. The last item is February 13th is our movie in the park, and we're working hard to get the last of those details squared away. Looks like we're doing Remember the Titans, hopefully, but we'll be able to firm that up in the next couple of days. So a nice family movie for everybody. Hopefully we get another great turnout. And for anybody watching at home, we've got sponsorship opportunities, too. So we've had a couple of great businesses step up to sponsor already, but we'll get more.
It's a good movie.
Yeah, it is.
Lauren, real quick, for the last movie in the park, we did distribution of flyers to the schools. Is that something you guys are going to be doing or is there something you need help with or?
Great question. So definitely something that's on our radar with the short notice and until we firm up the movie, we might not have it done for this one. But one thing that we are keeping in mind is the summer schedule, and so getting all of those movies picked out and dates so that those go home before the end of the school year, so that the summer movies or parents can get those on the calendar, too. So it's on our radar. You don't know for sure if it's going to happen for this movie, though.
Even, I know Clyde and Sherwin's or PTOs have Facebook pages?
Oh, sure.
And so maybe just ask them to share that because the parents do follow those as well?
Yeah, great idea, absolutely.
Or they're like full cut PTO meetings maybe coming up, I think, this next week.
Sure. I think, I'm guessing, I think Coles has one, too. I think it's called something different, but yeah, absolutely. Great idea. Thank you. We'll do that. Any questions for the chamber? Be happy to drive Eadie up here to answer them.
Anyone else? Thank you, Lauren. The next item is consent agenda. Any item can be removed for separate consideration. Move to accept. Second. Roll call.
Hold on, did Mike want to raise his issue?
Yeah, I just want to, I'm going to be caught at it's item E on the minutes.
Four E.
Four E? Four, four E, yes. I think that, Teresa, was that you that made that motion?
What was the motion?
Let's say it was.
To prove, to prove the consent agenda.
Oh, I believe it was. You are correct.
Okay.
I will happily take responsibility.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Searies?
Yes.
Next item, new business, consideration of resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, approving phase one design work for Seventy-third Street reconstruction in the amount of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred seventy.
Justin, this is the phase one from Hickman South to University, and so that's what that is. But we are just kind of put a note for the traffic study, we are doing a study on the entire thing because we kind of have to to get, to figure out what's going through, just kind of a note on that. So we are doing a little bit passive, but it's just initially a traffic study, figured out, so. And that'll happen, well, survey usually happens first, so we have to snowmelt before we can get out the survey and traffic study. We usually want to get before school's out, but when weather kind of cooperates and traffic gets back to its normal pattern, so it's kind of what this schedule is, so.
Justin, this is south of university?
North.
North.
Between university and Hickman.
You say south.
Did I say south? It's okay.
You said south. Hickman.
It's south Hickman.
Okay.
So that's the element of the journey.
And just so people are aware, this does not include the university intersection. Right. So that comes up in the next phase.
Yep.
How many open projects do we have?
Open projects?
Yeah, like we still haven't closed the sidewalk project, have we?
That's going to be the next phase coming up.
Okay, so with that in mind, how many open projects do we have? I'm just curious.
Just that one.
Okay. So we closed Sunset, and then I think, and that's the PCC is on this agenda, so all that leaves is the sidewalk project.
Correct.
Okay. Want to make sure.
Can I note, too, in looking at your information packet, you plan to have meetings with the elementary school apply by Sunday?
Yes.
I'd like to be part of that.
Okay.
Put me down on that, please.
Sure. It'll probably be after sometime in the summer, after the traffic study, so we kind of know where traffic's going.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Thanks, Justin. Motion to approve?
Someone?
Second. Roll call.
Harms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Searies?
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen, approving the twenty twenty PCC patching at an estimated cost of five hundred and two thousand five hundred and ninety-five.
Three locations in mind for PCC patching for this coming summer are Seventy-third Street Southbound outside lane by the YMCA entrance, the bridge approaches as Seventy-third Street crosses Walnut Creek, and the intersection of Seventieth and Hickman, south towards Wilshire. Those are all pretty busy roads. We've got traffic utilities, certain has failed at Seven Hickman, and I think they're good projects, and you've got the money to do it, so if there's any questions, you have to take them.
Don't, I'm sorry, heading southbound on University or that first bridge that your piece that you're talking about, is there any way to patch that for the moment? I've had several complaints of folks express concern about everything. So when you're approaching the Walnut Creek Bridge and heading southbound, and so then I made an attempt to, you know, make sure that I drove in that far westbound lane of that, is there, it's in pretty, I mean, I know where this is, this is the approach to fix it, but is there any way to patch that temporarily?
Sure, let me check it out.
Okay.
I looked at it, but I can both look and do it, and we can definitely throw some hot patch on it for sure, and if it needs more than that, I can look and do it.
Okay. Just, I just, I know that's something you're doing anyway, but if that's one that it was, it's pretty bad.
Yep.
Thank you.
This is, this is on Seventy-third South of Uni, so this is not the portion that we're recommending for replacements. We're not going to put it in and replace it in five years, so.
Well, when we get to Seventy-third South of University, will this still be, how do you get over it? I mean, do you have to take out which is patched?
When we redo it, I can't imagine that the corridor isn't about too much different south of the university just because it's so high travel. North of university, I think there's probably going to be some modifications in the roadway, like turn lanes, or especially up by the school, like pull a quick turn ins and outs, or, I really don't know that's a lot. But south of university, I think it's going to look the same, so I think the patch in it the way it is right now will be safe, and then they can work through that.
So the patching will remain?
That would be my intent, it would remain, yes.
Motion to approve? Someone? Someone? Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Searies?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Next item is consideration change order and final?
Final?
Pay request, two thousand eighteen PCC patching project in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents.
Justin, yes, this is the final, so the change order just kind of, all it does is cancel out the project or get rid of items that we didn't use to make sure, you know, final pay, final project cost, so kind of everything balances out for finance, bookkeeping type. And then the pay estimate is this really just getting rid of the retainage that was left, so. And this is finalizing projects for this one.
And in response to Mike's question a minute ago, now that this one's wiped off, we're going after the next one.
Right.
So you may not see that one for a little while, that one's got some interesting aspects to it, but it's on the radar, so.
Motion to approve? Someone? Second. Any discussion further? Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Susan Searies?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Searies? Yes.
Next item, consideration resolution twenty twenty fifteen, appointing regular and alternate member representatives to the MPO, including Transportation Technical Committee for twenty twenty. Motion to approve? Someone? Any discussion?
I'm on my favorite.
Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Searies?
Yes.
Item number E, consideration resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, resolution appointing Patrick Boucher?
Got it.
To the Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Patrick Boucher, attorney, lived in Windsor Heights for about seven years, maybe a little longer than that, blends together. Looking forward to getting engaged with Windsor Heights in a more organized way. Eager and happy to help out however I can. Saw the opening come up back in, I believe it was November, and thought this is probably a good way to slide in, get to know all of you, and start to do more of my part here in Windsor Heights. I met my, the one who got that one, Lauren, and was happy that the next one came, came open. So Mayor Verge, thank you for approving or submitting my application, and assuming that you'll vote yes to appoint me, I want to say yes in advance.
And thank you for the application.
Girl Panthers.
Motion? Someone? Roll call.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Searies?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Next item is fiscal twenty twenty twenty-one budget presentation.
I can't see glasses on, I can't see anything. I gave you a new set of paperwork, and all it has is just some notes and some highlighting, so it's, everything else is the same number wise, it's just notes of the one that was on the dice. For the public, this year, the little yellow sticky note in the bottom, that's really the important piece on this first page. So last year's levy rate was sixteen point five two four three one. This year's rate for right now, fourteen point four nine four eight two, which is a twelve point two eight percent decrease, two dollars and two cents will be the decrease. I will let you guys know that we did, I did just talk to Tiana this, well, this afternoon, actually Mark gave enough, you love it, right at four thirty, she called. And because of our bond offerings that are coming up, we're going to do a pre-levy, which is coming up, all that stuff's coming up. It will change our actual debt service levy rate by about three or four cents lower. So this number is actually going to go lower, and I'll have that one at the, and as soon as I can get it from her, as soon as we finalize things, it seems like things with those two bonding issues change every day, as soon as we get that levy rate, I will get it to you guys. But it will be lower, not higher, so. She thought three or four cents. Maybe we can go four or five, we'll see, see what we can do. Does anybody have any questions on this first page? It's not, I'll move on to the second, and that's on your expenditures page. And I did, there's no actual changes on this page from when you guys have seen it in the past, but does anybody have any questions about, oh, I'm sorry, there is no change, I'm such a liar. There's such, there is a change, and it's on, in column C, the general column, line thirty-seven, other culture and recreation. That number is now twenty-two thousand five hundred. So we added ten thousand dollars for fireworks, ten thousand dollars for special events, and then twenty-five hundred dollars for events for senior residents. The Budget Committee was the one that asked for the first two, and then Teresa asked for the last one. And then the other, I guess there is one other change. It is on line thirty-three, under the general column, parks, and we added thirty-five thousand dollars for exercise equipment for the park, and that was at the request of Teresa as well.
So Teresa, tell me about thirty-five thousand dollars for the exercise equipment.
So I'm super excited because I'm hopeful and optimistic, and Dalton and I have not had an opportunity to finish up, but I'm happy to show you some pictures. One of the things we know is that people are always looking for more ways to recreate in and around our community, and we find a lot of people who roll through our community, the Y's very close, and they often bring folks over to Colby Park for classes and those sorts of things, and then people use the community center for yoga, that sort of thing. And so the request is for an outdoor exercise facility. I believe in the past there was one down at Colby Park that was made of like railroad ties or something. The city of Clinton is the first state in Iowa right now to have an external kind of setup. If you've been to San Francisco, or in any lots of, in places in Florida and California wherever, along their trails, you find outdoor exercise kind of units. And so I think that they would be incredibly, it would be something that would be incredibly popular, particularly along the trail space as people are coming, whether they're coming from Fiverr, Urbandale, or from New Moines this way. It gives them an opportunity to stop at Colby Park and do, that could be part of their integrated workout. It also obviously adds a lot for our residents who maybe don't have a gym membership during the summer months or whatever, it gives them an opportunity to have a place to go and do, to have that exercise component. So I'm happy to show pictures. They're very popular, and so it's something that I would like to bring to our community. I suggested when we put this in there that I think that there are some opportunities or grants to be able to add or be able to provide for this, too. Dalton, anything I'm missing from our conversation that you can think of, you familiar with them? Has anybody seen them before?
No.
I didn't bring my phone down, but I can send a picture.
Teresa?
Is it you? Is it someone? Yeah, I can't see that far. My glasses will be here on Friday. I'm not kidding. So, yeah, no, so you can pass this around. So it provides opportunity for physical.
Like what size is it?
I don't know what size that one is in particular. I don't have any details on that, but it would provide, again, something for folks to be able to recreate outside.
At our budget meeting, our Budget Committee meeting on Wednesday, January fifteenth, we talked about this, and we also talked about then obtaining bids for a park plan so we would know where to put it, how much space we have, even using funds from this fiscal year twenty twenty, and Dalton and Mark are going to work on that. So, because it makes sense to have a plan in place before you have.
So my, the reason that we brought up the plan conversation was we want to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the park, right? Because you still want to have a green space, and you still want to have, and so we're thinking through like what happens if there's another request or something else, and all of a sudden we have a just crowded park and, you know, country everywhere. And so that was the reasoning behind wanting to make sure we knew how we're going to use the space, kind of big picture first, which I think is a good idea, because we never had a park plan or a layout plan, so we've just been kind of adding things as we go along, and we're going to run out of space. So, but ideally, you think along the trail?
I think along the trail.
but I'm working on a well-marked, John's not here, so, I'm working on a well-marked large match grant, a hundred thousand dollar grant to do this park plan and assist in implementation, so any money to help with basketball courts or basic, whatever it is that comes up, we need to identify fourteen, I think it's fourteen or fifteen items right now, and we want to make sure we get through public inputs and very important process.
And I expect the city's going to be submitting a prior amounts grant application at the end of this month, but also with things related to the park.
So the increase, then, is this sort of, these, these are the items we're looking into? Are we talking about specifically allocating it, then?
It's just a number, and it would have to be allocated by you guys, then, when made a decision to purchase.
You have to specifically spend it.
Thank you for saying that, because I think that that, I mean, I, I know we talked about it, and I said this is kind of a vision that I would love to have. I do love the, I mean, I do agree that we need to have plan, and I think that makes a lot of, a lot of sense, and I think when we talked about it earlier, I think, you know, certainly having resident input is essential, and to be able to have that. Other thing, and if somebody can answer this question, because I don't know, or if maybe we want to talk about it at this very moment, but I feel like we have another green space somewhere, and I know, can somebody answer that question? Is that it? I thought there was another one on the north side somewhere.
You technically have all that green space up there, but isn't usable.
Okay, so that, okay, so it's there, but it's not usable. Okay, fair enough. Again, can't see the map. But anyway, so I'm going to figure out where everything is, and then what is accessible and what we can, you know, to move forward and find some more records. So just big picture, this long term, or, you know, whatever, whatever plan we decide, I would support, and I would like to throw that as an idea.
I think it's real important for the plan. I think we had the Harmony Park portion, seemed a little crowded to me in there, but anyway, I don't know how much planning went into locating that, so I don't think we want to continue to do that, add pieces haphazardly.
It's quite important.
I support that.
Yeah.
I think my, my way of doing a budget is obviously a little different than what you guys have, and so what we normally did was if you thought of an idea, we stuck it in, because the beauty of a budget is it's a guest of it. And then when it comes down to spending the specific dollars, you guys have all the freedom to do what you want to do, but this way it gives you just an opportunity to put something in, hey, that's an idea, let's do that, let's put that in, let's put that in the budget so that you have the availability to spend it when the time comes. But that's just how I.
I'll see you tomorrow.
We love ideas. That's a good point. So I guess my, my vision of how I do that is a little different than what you guys do, but hopefully we can. Page one. Anybody not like that idea, and you do not want to see that on here, that's the point of this right now, is if you want something changed, we need to work on it.
I would hope that we have an individual idea, goes to the committee discussion, too.
Page two?
Yeah, yeah, ideas aren't bad, it's just when you start raising taxes and they become bad, so that's, that's.
The beauty of this one is we're decreasing by two dollars.
But, yes, with the, with the full two dollar decrease, I suppose, with three cents. Yeah. Oh, and it could be four or five more.
Right.
The beauty of this one is we're increasing by two dollars.
Yes, with the, with the full two-dollar decrease, I suppose, with three cents, yeah. Oh, and it could be four, five more.
Yes.
Every nickel out.
So, it says expenditures, page two at the top, um, page three at the bottom. There is, um, one thing that has changed on here, which you'll notice is in column F, debt service, and then line fifty-four, that number went from, um, two million up to three million, and the reason is because we added the, um, university project to the debt service line. So, the university project is gonna cost us one-point-three million, um, this coming up, for twenty-twenty-one, um, principal and interest. And that's gonna be paid from tip dollars. The other number that you guys will notice is in, um, column G, and then line fifty-five, that one jumped from a hundred and forty thousand to fourteen million one hundred and forty thousand. And that is, um, seven million dollars for each project, university, and then the twenty-twenty street project, so Allison sixty-ninth.
And college.
And college. Um, those numbers weren't on here before, we didn't have numbers, we had, we were working with Tiana and John to get those numbers. So, that, that's why that number has jumped the entire budget, obviously, by fourteen million dollars. But what we do have is revenue and expenses, they equal out. Any other questions on this page?
I'm not sure which page you're on, either.
Um, expenditures, page two at the top.
It says budget, page three on the bar.
Budget, page three at the bottom.
Yeah.
So, in page, um, at the top, it says revenue detail, at the bottom, it says page four. So then, this is just all the different revenues, and all the different sources, where they come from. This one did jump again by, uh, fourteen million dollars, under capital projects. Is there any questions on this page?
Um, remind me, on the local option sales tax, did we, did we take a low number based on?
We actually took the estimate from this year and utilized it next year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, so then, the next page, with the page five, at the top, it would say adopted budget summary, and I highlighted three slots for you guys. Column J, budget twenty-twenty-one, line seventeen, total revenues. So, that's the total of all of the revenues, twenty-six million six hundred thirteen thousand forty-one. And then same column, but line thirty, total of all your expenditures, twenty-six thousand nine hundred six hundred and sixty-two. Brings you down to line thirty-two, excess revenue, um, or, or other sources, over or under. And so then you have, um, two-hundred-eighty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-one, that, twenty-one dollars, that you would be spending out of your reserves, if you spent every single dollar, um, as planned on this budget. Which would still leave you with a ending fund balance, line thirty-four, of twelve million seven hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And that's utilizing every single penny, which never happens on a budget, so.
Might be preliminary to ask this question, but do you know are we on target for budget spending this year? And where are we in the percentage of our spend?
Uh, we are, um, very close to actually doing a budget amendment, looking at the budget amendment, I would. Every time I see something that needs amended, I've got a folder for it, and we have a good staff going. Um, we definitely will have a budget amendment, um, there's a few things that are over at this point, but I think it just wasn't budgeted correctly, that's all. So, um, we will definitely have that, um, by March, I'm thinking March, it'd be, I don't wanna do March second, so I think we're gonna wait till the sixteenth. To look at a budget.
Is this, um, two things, so to this two-eighty-seven number, um, is that a, as we're learning you, and you're learning us, is that something, a practice that you've got, because I don't think we've done that practice in the past, so is that, that common or a typical budgeting practice?
It is, um, and only because, um, of the amount of excess revenue in certain funds that you guys have. So, if you look at that line, but, but go clear over to, um, column G, so line thirty-two, column G, you'll see in the general fund, you're spending a hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight thirty-four of excess revenue. So, we are actually spending down some of your revenue in the general fund. And then if you go to the next line, special revenues, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-two. Because you have so, the fund balances are so large, um, we really wanna spend those down, and that's actually driving your levy rate down, using those. And if you go across to debt service, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand four thirty, so we're gonna utilize that out of the excess funds in the bound, in the balance sheet. For you guys, it makes sense, if for somebody that, that only had a couple hundred thousand in the bank, no, it wouldn't make sense. In this case, it makes complete sense.
Okay, thank you.
I think when we looked at this and talked through, it was the combination of the fact that we were gonna be able to lower levy, and address a lot of the projects we wanna get done, and we're gonna knock out a lot of projects, and I think Mike and I both agree that we can do as much as we can, especially the infrastructure needs to be done, and still deliver a levy decrease. I think that was, that's, um, Michelle Travis has been marked, and easy to, to work with, and just a great team to walk through, kind of restructuring, how we do our budget, and how we think about it, um, and the fact that so much money is sitting there, that we're not applying to the things that we actually need to address, I think is, you know, prudent use of those funds, so they're not just sitting there accumulating, and we have things that are probably in the process. Dalton always wants more money, so. There's things to be fixed, if he sees it.
Shabu's here, right?
Well, they all know.
We know he's, we know he's watching.
And I wanna say, too, that even with applying these fund balances, the city could go for six or seven years, applying equal amounts of fund balance to use up the excess, or what I believe is the excess in these funds. So, if this is not a one-year deal, or if it is a one-shot gone, it's gonna be around for a while. The city should continue to apply these fund balances, in my opinion.
Thank you for answering this question.
And, the next page is page six, and this is just your long-term debt schedule. I did, um, give you some notes on there about what, how we pay for all of these items. Tip is up to tax increment financing, and then you show, um, local option sales tax, and then we're actually reducing the debt service fund balance, a hundred and fifty thousand. Now, why it doesn't show a hundred and fifty thousand, if you go back to the adopted budget summary? And that reason is because of the commercial industrial rollback replacement. So, the state actually fills in, they give us a fill-in, and so that actually, um, gave us a little bit extra, so the hun, we tried to use a hundred and fifty, but we didn't quite get there. So, they're giving us thirty thousand dollars to use as a fill-in, so.
Don't say that out loud, I'll take it back.
Well, and I even only use, utilize it eighty-six percent, lots of cities utilize it a hundred, but I, you never know if you're gonna get a hundred, so we pay utilize about eighty-six percent, so, we'll see. Um, then the next, anybody have questions on that page? Also, I guess I should say that it does show pre-levy on those last two projects, lines five and six. And, um, so this is like a number that we're estimating, and Tiana and, um, John and I are trying our best to estimate as well as we can, so we can get it on this budget. Um, page seven, um, is the city of Winter Heights local option sales tax, and this just gives you, um, for twenty-twenty-one, where the money's going.
Rochelle, I think that would, this would be a, a good information pack out on the next newsletter.
Sure, we can do that.
I think that would be real important, because, I mean, sales tax was sold on the idea of property tax relief, and so I think that would be important to do so.
Um, I will let you know, the current balance of that lost fund is a hundred and forty-three thousand one seventy-two. So, in the, um, next month, probably not the second meeting, not the first meeting, it's gonna be in March, um, when we do our budget amendment, we need to, um, think about where you wanna put those funds, where, how you wanna disperse them, because none of that money was budgeted, um, for this year, for twenty-twenty.
I just, I just want our stakeholders, that we all work for, to be aware of that.
Sure.
And also, I mean, it's a lot of stuff, on the next page, is really pretty good information. I'd call it the attention of some people already, to look at those two pages.
Excellent, good, I'm glad it's possible. Good, um, any questions about lost?
When does the, uh, the library contract start tomorrow?
So, I, it just starts like one.
And we're, at the time when this was talked about, it was ninety, but now it's going to be, what, sixty-something?
Sixty.
So, where's that other money, that other?
The other thirty is going into the general fund.
Okay.
And that, I got that from, um, some paperwork from a long-ago council meeting, that's where all these things came from. Um, if we want it to be something different, we can, although, the actual balance of the local option is going into the general fund anyway. Um, so, if we didn't put it there, we would, you could put it wherever you want.
And then, with the, um, the ERP, um, obviously, the, uh, concern we had the last time around, was, I think this is pretty, brought to everyone's attention, so, this three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, um, are we going to put that in a separate account, then?
We are, and we actually even have that separate account already set up, so you guys to be aware of that. And I set it up, I thought I had a balance sheet with me, I think I do, I just don't know where it is. So, we set it up that, um, we have a cash lo, or we have a cash account, which is how everything, every fund is set up, there's a cash account, and it's actually called a equipment revolving fund. And then underneath that cash account are cash lines for every single ERP that you guys had previously as separate accounts. So, all those cash lines go under the one same heading, and, um, we were able to, when we had our technical support person here from G-Works, which is our accounting software, she actually took what you, what was, um, done, in these accounts that were numbered four-hundred, which doesn't exist in Iowa's code, she, we took all those, and we actually put them into a capital equipment fund, called a equipment reserve fund, um, three-fifty is their numbers, and, um, those, all those balances, or anything that happened in those accounts, got switched into the three-fifties, and now all is on the balance sheet as its own separate area.
Rochelle, let me ask you now, this, this, you got?
And there is money in there.
Okay, okay, you got that, so, does it have a sub thing for, uh, public works?
Yes, so each one has their own, so streets, and snow, and CEC, and, um, IT, I'm trying to remember.
Okay.
I have my thing, but yes, they all have their own sub things, and if we need to add more, we can add more.
Thank you.
And so, all the money did get transferred into there, and there wasn't, um, a piece in that audit that stated that there was a million dollars transferred into that four-hundred fund, um, the ERP fund, from, um, I'm trying to remember.
ATE.
ATE funds that got transferred into there. So, that million dollars was sitting there, and it was actually on the audit, so the auditor said, no, it can't be sitting there. Uh, because it, it, that, the, that four-hundred number isn't a capital improvement fund. So, we transferred that million dollars where it was supposed to go, into a streets, into the streets piece, um, under the three-fifty heading. So, now, there is money sitting, and I will be able to get you guys, I should've brought that and gave, given you all that. Um, I'm actually working on our balance sheet, I actually had some stuff from Mark today, we're fixing the balance sheet. And I will get you guys a copy, though, of that, so you can see that ERP stuff specifically.
And about how much is in there?
In the ERP?
Yeah.
And all of it, the problem is, some of it is actually negative, some of it's positive, so that's what we're working on fixing. But there's at least, at least a million and a half in that ERP fund.
How is that?
For now.
Bravo, you make my heart smile.
I'm glad, I'm really glad that we.
I about.
We did fix that.
Got some more ideas, huh?
Plenty of ideas.
Don't mention, I don't get any ideas.
Oh, they already have.
Oh, they already have, let's sign them on the list.
You just approved my idea of the street patching, so.
We're good for today.
One, one per minute.
An ATE, but it was kind of divided, ninety percent for infrastructure projects, and then ten percent for the, uh.
So, I'm glad it's budgeted, I think it'll be a good thing for you guys to see it, instead of doing it, you know, whatever that thing was. So, I think it'll be a cleaner process overall. And then included in this budget is stuff that's coming out of the ERP, out of there, it's all budgeted. So, there's a vehicle budgeted, there's stuff for ambulance budgeted, it's all budgeted, so.
Fantastic, that's what we want. Um, real quick, so we have this four-forty-three from lost, um, that's for, that you said you're gonna be bringing forward, so is there, Mark, a list of things in queue that are gonna go to budget committee, or, um, is it?
Not at this moment.
Okay, just curious, I mean, just, I'm assuming that you guys will all put together a wish list or something.
I could come up with more projects, but I have been cut off.
Yes, because I have my own list of things that need to be.
By the finance director.
Somebody's gotta keep you in line.
Yes, there's some balances that need to be, uh, fixed before we, so I'll bring all that to you guys, but there's only some balances that are, um, pretty hefty, and a lot of it's in the capital improvement street stuff, um, and we're working through that to get that fixed.
Okay.
But you might need a chunk of that to fix those, to make them right, but, um, that's why I won't let Mark have any of it.
That's helpful, for now, thank you, okay, good.
And then the very last page, or not the last page, I guess page eight, is just this, um, property tax example that I put together, um, and this just compares city tax levy rates from twenty and twenty-one. I just wanna stress again, it's just comparing the city rate, because I don't think, um, residents understand that there's more to your tax bill than just the city's rate. It's the schools, which is the biggest piece, the county, and then other, which is lots of other things.
And that's real important, they, they realize that.
Yes.
We realize that, too.
Yes, so I did have residential on there only to begin with, and then I added commercial, um, and rollback for commercial is always ninety percent, so, that didn't change. But there is a nice decrease, um, this year, um, for residential, fifteen-point, uh, one-two percent, and then twelve-point-two-eight for commercial.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I would also recommend that, and I think Mike and me just said that earlier, but even to just do like a write-up on this that could go on the newsletter that said, um, you know, this is gonna be the red option, right? And this, that this is, this, these are the pieces of your whole property tax pie, um, that how it adds up to get to your whole property tax. And to, to your point, I think people don't realize that, I think it's just where we get all the money and are having fireworks, but.
Yeah, I think.
I probably have people ready, three-sixty-seven, and, as I said, sixty-eight.
I think it's a good reminder for people.
And the last piece I have in there is just what's gonna be coming up on the agenda next, it's just the notice of the public hearing to oppose property tax levy. Um, this sheet is, um, not my favorite, I wouldn't recommend that, I, I don't know, I just don't particularly care for it. I think it's confusing to people, because it only shows, uh, tax rates, maximum tax rate. Um, in this case, it's, um, twelve-point-one-five-nine-nine-seven, and that doesn't include our debt service levy, so this is not a true picture of, of what the city is going to be, um, charging, so I, I think it's kind of, it's supposed to be, um, it's supposed to allow people to have a quicker, or, or be more easily accessible quicker, um, than waiting for the full budget, but I think it's confusing with people, unfortunately. I did, we did put some information in the, um, newsletter this time, right? We got, it got in the newsletter, right?
Newsletter goes out on Thursday, so we have time to.
Yeah, and it's, it was in now, already, yeah. So, um, that's what this piece is, and this is just the legislature wants you guys to approve it, so that, um, that we can move on to budget, for budget. Any questions on this piece? It's Max's levy. Any other questions in general? Happy to answer.
I don't have any, got a situation, and if anybody responds, or asks questions, or, okay. Just the budget, if anybody had questions, or any comments, or anything, it's just double checking on that, so, well done, thank you for all your hard work. I know this is not an easy task, so thanks to the team for that.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty-twenty-guy-seventeen, setting the time and place for a public hearing.
setting the time and place for a public hearing for the purpose of considering the maximum tax dollars for certain levies for the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. That public hearing is going to be 6:00 PM, March 2nd. Second. Roll call. Carms?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
Lopreto?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is council reports.
Well, let's see. The Economic Development Committee met probably about a week ago now, talked about the tax abatement plan. Wanted to thank Rochelle for going over the budget with me after that meeting because she went, changed my page with me because I don't really know all the ins and outs. And she was able to tell and explain things to me, so I appreciate that. Then I attended a meeting about the movies in the park. As Lauren said, February 13th will be the movie. Then, again, a little plug, if anyone would like to sponsor a movie or even provide refreshments or anything along those lines, we would be more than happy to accept anything from people to kind of defray the costs. On Saturday, my husband and I, along with a few others here, went to the Bravo Gala. It was an amazing event that showcased all that Bravo does to support the community. Then today, I attended the Pope County Management Annual Partnership Meeting. It gave a basic overview of all that Pope County Emergency Management is involved in. They talked kind of a little bit of a smart 911 app where you can provide 911 with the important information. You can add as much or as little as you would like in this app. The emergency responders can see the information off this app when you do call 911. You can list family members, medical information, animal information, emergency contacts, and even vehicle information. Then they also talked about Code Red. Code Red system is used to send critical communications about everything from evacuation notices to missing child alerts. You can sign up for Code Red by going to thepoccountyiowa.gov/EmergencyManagement. Scroll to the bottom, click Code Red box, and I do have pamphlets on both.
We had a MPO meeting two weeks ago, November 23rd. This is another review. Nothing too shabby to talk about. Today's dark meeting focused on the dark budget that will be public hearing. Comment coming up for that. Along with, we talked about a new proposed facility to replace the current maintenance and storage facility that's out south of the river. And so we discussed that and what that would look like to build new versus trying to upgrade or improve what's currently there. Then the last thing is we'll start a pilot program for electric buses and they'll run Route 60, which is the bi-directional loop. So it's Ingersoll and University, 42nd and. So that will start later this year. So we'll have seven buses.
Part of that will be kind of five technicians doing the work on it.
Well.
That's a discussion.
Yeah, and I hope that our maintenance staff will trade up or retrain.
They may have to.
Yeah.
Read hires of people. Writers of people.
Sure.
I'll pass to you.
Okay. Mike?
I don't have, Bravo's orientation is not until, I believe, the end of the month. I think possibly 26 or 27, so. I have nothing new there. I was wondering if we were going to address or if there was going to be some sort of release or discussion about what happened on Willshire.
That's still under investigation.
I think there was an email today.
I was told an arrest had been made, so.
There is.
Chad said they were releasing.
There was going to be a release there.
There will be a public release of that, but until then, considered still under investigation. What you have been told is just enough to keep you aware, but not the intimate details of that.
That's all I have.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's good that Chad did that because people who live on that street, obviously, know what happened. Yeah, you live there, of course. So I mean, I think it.
Maybe they're shooting anyone.
Maybe they were.
Did shoot them?
No. Therese?
Metro Waste January meeting, the big issue was Pope County is going to be issuing bonds for the new work. And so that's a big deal because it's a big project. And so it's going to save us a lot of money to be able to do that and go help keep rates in check and that sort of thing. So that was probably the biggest agenda item there. And then also appreciated the opportunity to go to Bravo, the Bravo event and just reminding everybody that they, one of the things that will impact our community is the installation of the public arts in the bus stops. And so our new bus stops along University will have those. And I believe it'd be something, not, am I right? Joseph, maybe?
Yes, it's quite, it's quite a possibility, obviously. At least one or two.
Yep. So just a FYI, so look for your public arts and your public bus stops. That's all the legislative supplemental, very full span right now.
More? Two rental inspection proposals were received, and I hope to have a recommendation at the next meeting on which firm we should select. Bids for the College Al's and 69th work are due on the 20th of this month and hope that we have a contract awarded March 2nd meeting. Bids for the University ad work will be taken by the DOT on February 18th. The contracting process takes a little while, so it may be a couple meetings after that before you see an agreement at a city council meeting. The city's contract with the previous auditor has expired and RFP for new audit firms was sent out to six firms today. An RFP for personnel consulting works will also be sent out this week, I believe, to about 12 firms. The staff will be having a phone call with John Danos, our bond counsel, tomorrow regarding the tax abatement program. And we may start to see something at the next meeting on adoption of a commercial tax abatement program. There are two new maps on the east wall. The left one, as you face them, is the zoning map. And the right one, oh, wait a minute, I got that backwards. The left one, what does it say at the top? The left one's future land use, isn't it?
Left is zoning, right is future land.
All right. Left is zoning, oh, I'm at the wrong corner. My glasses are here, I still. So the left one's a zoning map and the right one is a future land use map. There's one more map that I would like to get, that we're going to get eventually. It's the TIF map, but we're going to be probably commending the original area here in the next month or two. And so before we make a bunch of them and then have to change it right away or just going to wait for the, those audits to be approved, then we'll have a TIF map. And then you'll have all the, what I believe are the pertinent maps in the room for use during these meetings of a plan commission or whatever there is. And finally, I sent down an email and some of you responded, most of you responded, about the start time for the next meeting to review the city administrator candidate recommendations from the consultant. So a couple people said it didn't really matter what time we started. I think Joseph, you are not going to be with us for that meeting, is that correct?
Who, who?
The 17th of February?
I'm not here, correct.
Okay. And so the consultant recommended about 90 minutes to review these. And the consensus I got from people was they wanted to do it before the regular meeting. So the question is, what time do you want to start this next time? 4:30, 5:30? It doesn't really matter to me, it's whatever you want. Put it in your schedule.
Agenda? Is it?
Not much at this point. The 17th. So if you want to start at 5:30, you have the 90 minutes, start the regular council meeting at 7 o'clock. Our meetings last month or two have been taking an hour or so. Get down about 8 o'clock maybe. I'm not aware of any major issues coming up on the 17th right now.
Mark, the only I would say on that, we've always had it at 6 o'clock, but right now.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Well, and so you could start at 4:30 with the review with the consultant and then you can start the council meeting at 7 o'clock, or 6 o'clock, so.
I would think that would be more user-friendly.
I'm only because it's the first hot all week. It's not ideal for me, however, I mean, I can do the best that I can do.
Would find work better.
I mean, the later it is, it's better, it's going to work for me, but.
Well, if, Joseph, you're not going to be here.
I am going to review ahead of time and write some notes.
That helps. But regardless, you're not going to be here.
Correct.
Therese, if you're, you know, going to be in session, I think it would be prudent to, at very least, have, you know, as many people here as possible. And so starting later is going to ensure your presence. I think that we should start later.
Yeah.
That's my opinion. So if you would try to keep that agenda as light as possible, I don't see the reason why we couldn't start at 5:30. That's just me. That's just me.
That works.
I think we do our meeting at 5:30 and then, yeah, I, I don't.
Well.
Is that what you're thinking?
I was thinking we review the candidates at 5:30 and then start the regular business at 7 o'clock then.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Well, hold on, the process isn't just like looking through paperwork. I know that's.
We're not going to give any action, right?
Well, I think you're going to be narrowing down the pool to those who will be interviewed.
Right, but we don't have a council action item.
No, it will be a closed session event.
Okay.
How many?
It's going to be around a dozen.
Mark, is there a way to review those at halftime?
You will, yes, you will have them on the 13th of the month, I believe. I think that's the Wednesday, I think it's the previous Wednesday. There's Wednesday or Thursday that we will get them from the consultant and we will deliver them to you that same day. Assuming we don't get them at 4:30 in the afternoon, then it might be the next day, but.
Yeah, that's right.
If we get them early enough in the day, we'll make sure everybody gets them the same day.
That'll, that'll help.
Yes, so you'll have a number of days to review them prior to that meeting.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing an offer to start at 5:30 with the candidate review, if I'm understanding, or I got that.
That's what I'm pitching.
I would almost prefer that we knock out the council meeting first and then just from then, we don't have to have downtime. So if we get done early, we're not waiting or whatever, so we can just be done when we're done.
In other words, just do the meeting at 6 regularly and then as soon as that's over, then go into review.
Or we could start a council meeting, I know it's different.
Yeah, I guess I thought that we were, I thought there was more of a set agenda with the, you know, the time beforehand, but. If it's just, if it's reviewing the candidates, that sounds like that could kind of be, that could take an hour and a half, it could take half an hour, so.
The consultant's recommending 90 minutes.
I, I understand.
I don't know exactly why, but I'm trusting her judgment.
And it's like we took seven before, went through those at a pretty quick rate. So.
So let's do it after then?
I don't care, just decide, it was good.
All right, let's do it after the council meeting. Do we want to start the council meeting early then?
I'm not going to be here, but I would say start at the regular time.
We might get confused.
Start in the regular time and we'll do it after.
We'll have a light agenda.
And we'll have a light agenda. On your word. Swear to me, Mark.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, did I hear it earlier? Brian, I'm, I've got to add it. Where's he going?
Okay.
I'm not in control of that one.
He's there, Chad, right?
Okay, so, trigger meeting at 6:00 PM and we'll do this afterwards as the time flows through. You got anything else?
No, that's enough.
Travis?
City Code is now online. Go check it out, welcoming buttons on the front. I kind of want to talk to him about just having all the chapters listed out right away. There's a couple extra clicks in there that seem kind of off or weird to me, so. So I've got that done with very little effort, actually, but it's up. So we changed our HRA flex to a new company cable business services. It's gone very smoothly. I did notice that I was ready for dispersment and there was one glitch that the Wellmark claims weren't being auto-processed into the HRA system. But once they get that fixed, they got the download on Sunday night and I get my reimbursement tomorrow. So employees should see a much easier process going forward than our prior company. Had a kickoff meeting with Civic Clerk. So right now, they are, they gave them all our agendas and how we wanted the agenda management backend piece to look. And then they're going to do a first look meeting in about a week or so. So that process is up and going. And everyone offers some kudos to Rochelle and getting G-Works in here to help us fix our accounting system. It was nice also to have some training here. Got some new tips and tricks for payroll and making things much easier. And other than that, I attended the Metro Finance Officers' meeting in a lot of heat on Thursday. And we dropped back a lot of topics about product firms and different things that were going on around the metro, so that's it.
Thank you. Next item is move to go into closed session in accordance with chapter 21.5. Like one sub J to discuss purchase or sale of particular real estate only. Premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price. The government body would have to pay for the property and reduce the price of the government body would receive that. So move. Okay?